Call of order, say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bob, you're councilmember, and we're here.
Here.
Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
And Mary would.
Here.
Addition or amendments to the agenda. It looks like we are going to amend the agenda to put in another item in the executive session. Legal counsel, ORS one nine two six six zero two H. For litigation, so that will go down for a second executive session. Yeah, I have motion, right?
Yes.
Emotion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'm so moved.
All right. All right. All in favor, oh, it's only discussion here first, Pete, if you had any discussion. Any discussions?
So there was two things on any section?
Yes, we just added another one.
The other one again, same situation, okay, all right, thank you.
All right. All right, no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right.
I'm going to be opposed.
Okay. Right, executive session number two, legal counsel passes. Want to oppose? Six yeas. All right. Adoption of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the approval of action minutes of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Approval of the minutes of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the special city council meeting. Approval of the OLCC special event license for land mass lines. And approval of noise waiver for wedding events in October third, twenty twenty-five. Sorry.
All right, any discussion?
It's just, um. I, I know that there was some memo in our packet about the bills not being included because they're getting what's why we haven't had bills for a long time.
I want the, the question you guys have about the missing checks, want to make sure the report correct for you. Show everything in a clear manner, we didn't have time to get it put together, so we should have it set for the next council meeting.
And then also I wanted to ask Kathy, because we are changing the ordinance for the noise waiver. I know I asked you behind, but I want to ask in public, um, this one is under ordinance four forty-five. And we're possibly changing it four forty-nine, will that make a difference?
It will make no difference, the request came in, I'm in current ordinance. And the new ordinance is only plain up, so nothing is changing in the ordinance, just a number.
Thank you.
So with regards to the minutes, as somebody who's been attending remotely, I just wanted to say, you know, those minutes have the action, the, the recording as the, you know, the supplement. And the, the, all the mics have been working wonderfully, so I haven't had those people coming in and out. Set a last several meetings, so I feel like whatever we've tweaked is working well.
Yeah, I think the, the initial problem was I had nine mics, I tried to put one at every spot, and it was just too much of a daisy chain. So it's down to five mics now, and it seems to make a big difference. Yep, yep.
Somebody else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, adoption of the consent agenda passes, we can have a seat. All right. Parents of interested citizens to share their perspectives on issues facing our community. Were you? James, were you sharing with tourism or right now?
I'm a citizen, I'm a citizen.
Okay. So you went on this, he's on, he's on down the agenda, what were you going to share about?
Uh, I was going to talk about my experience on the tourism.
Okay, why don't you come on and have a seat?
Okay, good.
Plans.
Hi, y'all, I'm James. Uh, side note, there's movies at the park starting tomorrow night sponsored by Port Hood River. So cartoons at eight thirty, movies at nine. Um, so our tourism committee, thank you very much for pointing me to that, I appreciate it. Uh, we are recommending a budget to you, which you guys will see soon, if you haven't already. I wanted you to hear my perspective on the budget, because you can't necessarily see it and decisions that we made. Uh, we were told by Jordan that cleaning the bathroom at Overlook Park costs twenty thousand dollars a year. We looked at whether or not that falls within the T O T funds, the thirty percent that we are recommending usage of. And yes, a tourism facility does fall within that, so yes, the tourism committee will take on the expense of maintaining and cleaning the bathrooms at Overlook Park. The city staff, even though the grant stated, I pulled up the original grant, thank you very much Kathy, stated that the bathroom would be maintained by city crews as part of their regular routine in cleaning the streets, quote unquote. Um, that's not been sufficient, the bathrooms have been graffiti, a lot and damaged. And if twenty thousand dollars that we're taking from our money, that's fifty-five dollars a day, is not sufficient for the city staff to be cleaning those bathrooms, then the city, the tourism committee would like to contact that up. Because the very first destination that people are going to in downtown is the bathroom, there's a sign on the highway saying that we have a bathroom. If people walk in there and they see it's covered by graffiti, they think we live in a slum. So, in the past, city maintenance has not been able to keep that up. We're allocating twenty thousand dollars of the money we were reporting to be responsible for to make sure that happens. I don't know how to work that out with y'all, okay, that's one. Two, we did put into the contract, the city of Cascade Logs assigned a contract with the history museum to provide administrative services to the tourism committee. You'll notice in our budget that that goes to the end of November, because that's the contract that was signed. And then we have a separate line item for a full-time administration position that goes from December to the end of this coming fiscal year. Um, we want to be able to have a voice in that request or proposal to speak to what it is that tourism committee really wants that person in the full time to be doing. Right now with the contract, we actually have no say, although I will say that we seem to have been doing a lot of great things. I'm not sliding them at all, but we would like to have a much more active participation in that. That's all, thanks y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one online, Kathy. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, James.
All right, special presentations. Water and Wastewaterage Trilogy LLC.
Okay. Um, now that the city knows the cost to hire a new treatment plant operator, Trilogy LLC has revised the rates needed to sustain operations of the plant and maintain the appropriate level of reserves in the sewer fund. Trilogy has also provided three options for updates to our water rates revolving around changes to debt fees and increases to water usage rate. Trilogy will present the recommendations, staff are looking for consensus to move forward to present resolutions for rate adoptions at future council meetings. And I will now hand it over to Eric and Christie from Trilogy.
Thank you, um, it's telling me I can't share my screen here. So I wonder if she could change the setting, all right.
Okay, give it a try now.
All right. Okay, I think we're in business. Okay, can you see the PowerPoint at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and then if I go to slide view, is that still visible?
Yep.
And, uh, okay, and then can you see me change my screen, my slide? Okay, perfect. Okay, so, um, I, I want, without belaboring this, I do want to walk through what, um, each of these slides is showing. Um, starting with a couple slides that look at kind of the overall revenue picture for each utility. And then we're going to get into what the, um, impacts would be on a typical residential bill, and then, um, that, again, that community comparison with other communities in your area that we have expanded to include some additional communities. So by way of background, um, at the last meeting, we reviewed three alternatives for, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of walk through a little background and then get into what the slide is specifically showing, but the three alternatives we looked at last time for the debt service, um, charges were alternative one, which was our initial proposal of reducing that debt service rate, those debt service rates by about forty-three percent um, down to the minimum level that's needed to pay your debt service. Um, so that would be from twenty dollars to eleven dollars and ten cents, um, for the water system improvements rate and a, uh, two dollars per month, um, down to one fifty for the, um, the corrosion control projects. So that was alternative one. Um, alternative two was keep those debt service rates at the current levels, um, which would enable you to pay off the debt about fourteen years earlier than you would on your alternative one and, um, result in some interest, um, cost savings. And then alternative three was kind of between those two alternatives, so, um, reducing the debt service charge by about twenty-one percent. So it'd be kind of halfway in between that minimal level and where it is currently. And that would allow you to pay off the debt about nine years earlier, as opposed to, um, just reducing it to the, the level needed to pay the, the current debt service. We also talked at the last meeting that the, um, base charge and usage charges that fund all of your operating expenses do need to be increased by thirty-nine percent. So with that forty-three, um, percent um, reduction in debt service charges immediately and a thirty-nine percent increase in the base and uses charges, alternative one would really result in no overall increase in revenues. You'd be, um, just redistributing the charges a bit. Um, with alternative two, um, where you'd be keeping that debt service, um, the same as it currently is. Um, we looked at phasing in the, um, increase in the base and usage charges over a period of three years. And so that would be, um, the overall rate increases that you see over here for alternative two, so six point seven percent this, immediately this year, seven point three percent the following year, and then seven point seven percent overall, um, the third year. So that would be keeping the debt service rates the same, but then gradually increasing that, um, the base and usage charges. Um, with alternative three, if you're going to drop down the debt service rate, um, you could phase in that increase in the base and usage charge, it is over two years while still having slightly lower overall rate increases here, um, the five point four percent this year and then five point two percent next year. So that's kind of the big, high-level summary. Um, looking at what's on the chart, the three blue bars represent, um, the amount of revenues coming in from the debt service charges, so currently you're bringing in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, with alternative one, you could drop that down to about a hundred and forty-two thousand per year. Alternative two is showing keeping that at the current level, and then alternative three is that sort of halfway point in between. So that looks the same for all of these, those are kind of the three options we've talked about with debt service. And then these, um, orange, pink and orange and red bars show the amount of revenues from the, um, base and usage charges that fund your operating costs. So you need to get that from this level here, um, which I believe it's about two hundred and eighty thousand, up to kind of roughly this three hundred and eighty to ninety thousand dollar level, um, is where you need to get to, whether you do that now or phase it in over two years or three years. So alternative one would be that thirty-nine percent bump immediately, and then it would stay the same. Alternative two, again, phasing it in over three years, so that piece of it would have to go up by twelve point eight percent next year and another fourteen percent the following year. And then another fourteen percent the following year to kind of get you to that same place. Um, and then with the second alternative, again, it's kind of the halfway in between, um, phasing that in over two years. And these are all kind of revenue neutral as far as, um, where you, where you're able to maintain your water utilities cash reserves, so we're showing that you'd be able to maintain cash reserves, they're a little bit above, but pretty close to kind of that recommended level. So I guess we'll stop there and see if there's any questions on this one before I move on. Okay, all right. Uh, and then with the sewer rates, the issue there is the new water, um, wastewater treatment plant operating contract. And we had previously looked at, um, one of the scenarios was, well, sort of the break-even point for, for where you might look at hiring full-time staff was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for that contract. Um, so it did come in at two hundred and ninety thousand roughly, um, with a two and a half percent inflation factor per year. So it's a little bit higher than what we had initially talked about, and so, um, you know, we're still comfortable with that rate increase for this year of just under ten percent, um, but we would be looking at recommending some overall a little bit higher rate increases, um, than what we had talked about last time for future years. And just to explain here again, the, the green on these stacked columns is the amount that you need for debt service payments. Um, so regardless of what you do with the operating charges, um, we recommend increasing those debt service rates by twelve point four percent to cover, you know, where you actually landed with that annual debt service payment. Um, and then the orange is the operating piece of those revenues, um, so again, like a nine point two percent increase overall approximately for this year, followed by a series of a couple of nine percent increases. And then, um, what we're recommending is adopting the next three years, but we did do some projections a little further out. And then these percentages here represent that overall percentage, so next year, I'm with no increase in the debt and a nine percent in the operating, um, charges, that gets you to about six point nine percent overall increase, and then seven percent, and then four point eight percent. Um, and again, the balance in the sewer, the, uh, the operating reserves that you have in sewer fund are a little bit higher um, than what you have in the water fund, so this would show you drop, you know, drawing those down a little bit. But there's a little bit less, um, certainty, I guess, with the future expenses for the sewer utility, so we do recommend adopting, um, adopting a schedule of rate increases, but then continuing to review it and just, um, see how it's the, you know, what, what's going to happen with that contract going forward in future years. Okay, um, and then if we move on to the impacts, there's a lot of numbers on here, but I'll try and walk through these pretty quickly. Um, so this shows the um, average monthly bill for both water and sewer combined for a typical residential customer. Um, so your typical customer uses about six thousand gallons of water per month on average, with that being, you know, lower in the summer and higher. Sorry, lower in the winter, higher in the summer, but six on average, so these were all based on that six thousand gallons per month. So currently about a hundred and eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per month for a typical customer. Um, then with the water, alternative one, there'd be a very, very small increase for that typical customer with dropping the, um, debt service charges down and increasing the base and usage charges. Um, for alternative two, um, that would see the highest increases for the, the water, um, customers, again, phasing that in over three years. That's a total impact on their monthly bill of about eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents per month, and then alternative three is roughly in between those two numbers with about a six dollar and twenty-three, um, cent per month impact. And then for sewer, this nineteen dollars and forty cents is the, forty-seven cents is a cumulative impact of four years of, of increases, assuming you did that six percent again in, um, the, the fourth year. Um, so overall, uh, and then we also added on here again, just to refresh everyone's memory, kind of the future interest savings associated with paying off that water debt early. So you've got some balance, fund balance, um, already in the water utility to pay off, that, that's been collected towards that debt, so that's why you have a little bit of interest savings, even with alternative one, because you still have that fund balance that could be used to pay off early. Um, and then highest savings, obviously, with alternative three and a little bit, sorry, two and a little bit kind of halfway in between again with, um, alternative three. And then in terms of the total annual bill, um, you know, makes about a hundred and thirty dollars difference if you compare the first alternative with the lowest water rates, um, versus the, the one with the highest, so it's kind of the, the summary there. Um, and then this is the community comparison, again, showing, um, the average um, total water and sewer bill, um, for various communities in your area. And you'll see, this is, this is where you are currently, you're really kind of in the middle of the pack. We didn't add in all of the various options, because there was a lot of different scenarios there. Um, we added in, and I hope I don't mispronounce any of these community names, so we added Waschugel, Gresham, Comus, um, Troutdale and Fairview to the comparison, just to get a broader range. So if you were to go with looking back at this previous option, if you're going to go to, um, I'm sorry, for the, for the coming year, um, if you increase that to, you know, somewhere between thirteen ninety-eight and fourteen twenty-seven, sorry, that would put you somewhere in this range, um, and then if you're looking, you know, four or five years out, depending on which option you use there, um, you'd probably be looking at somewhere up in this range, but again, these are current rates, so depending on what they do with their rates in the, in the meantime. Um, we can't say exactly where you'll land on that comparison once other communities, if other communities increase their rates. That is what we had, just to share with you as far as kind of summarizing these options, we're happy to take questions, comments.
Thanks for the report. So on the sewer, uh, and I asked this at the state administrator when I read the packet, but I'm still not completely clear, so on that slide, are you saying that we have one point two million as like a fund balance, or what, 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 what does that one point two million represent?
Yeah, and we, so we're working, um, from older audit, older audits, right? And then, and then projecting forward based on trial balances and unaudited funds, but this is, this is our best estimate of the projected, um, year-end sewer fund for twenty twenty-five, for, for the year ending at the end of this month. Um, and so that is separate, there's also a small capital reserve fund, um, that you're going to be putting about fifty-six thousand dollars into per year to build up some funds to replace equipment. Um, and then there's also the, and I, I've, I'm blanking on the name, exactly what the name of it is, but there's like the, the debt service fund, basically.
All right.
It's, yeah, this is more of the general operating fund.
Yeah, do you want?
Yeah, does anybody else have a question? Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so on that, on the, the transfer we're doing, this came up, I think you know, we're, 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 uh, we're negotiating our budget right now. And there was a question on whether you could take money from the capital reserves to kind of offset a shortfall in our operating budget from the sewer funds. And I, I thought that that was, you know, uh, maybe an issue. But as I think about it, and I hear this presentation, I just realized, just occurred to me, all the money in the capital reserve, its originating source was the operating fund, it was sewer uh, rates that we took money from just over the years, and then we put it in the capital reserve for capital purposes, but can't you just reverse that if you have a shortfall? Do you know the, do you know the answer to that question? Are you familiar with the orderly budget law?
I don't, I can't give you a legal answer to that, but I did, you know, looking at the audits, yes, those, those funds are transferred out of the, the, out of this sewer operating fund initially.
Okay.
So, but this is, this is, what I'm showing here is just the operating fund, it's, this is not the capital reserve.
Yes, and I, I don't, how about the rest of the account, without surprise to me, that you're, you're, anyway, have a one point two million dollars like surplus in the operating fund. Uh, so that's good news, because I thought it was much worse. Okay.
Right, yep.
And then the next question, so on this combined chart, is this one down? Uh, we're not doing, there's not three alternatives for sewer, there's just the one alternative, is that right?
Correct. Yeah, because you, yeah, you have the new operating, um, contract, and you just need to be able to, you know, cover those expenses, so there's not really a a different alternative, yeah.
And then whether we do, I went back to that sheet that you put together maybe in your first presentation, uh, current proposed rates, where you broke down fixed costs, et cetera. And then in your piece, you basically laid out two, uh, two options within that. You have an increased, uh, uh, base charge, uh, and then some of your you have increased base charge plus your, you know, your meter, uh, charge. But then you can do a, uh, uh, a, a, a winter water average charge, where you, where you, in this case, you were maybe proposing nine dollars and thirty cents per thousand. Are these numbers, the sixty dollars on that, or sorry, sixty-seven for, does that assume we're charging nine dollars and thirty cents per thousand that are being processed by the treatment plant, see what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, that's assuming that, um, almost all, like, this is an average residential customer, so it's basically assuming that, that, um, with this, um, they would pay the fifty dollars, it was fifty dollars per month for, um, usage, but so that's, that's that charge that, that they pay unless they go over the ten thousand gallons usage. So it's assuming they would pay that, that fifty dollars plus, um, a seventeen dollar per meter, um, charge for the debt service.
Okay, so, all right, but, but I guess if we choose to do the nine dollars per thirty per thousand gallons, do you feel comfortable, we're going to generate a revenue of sixty-seven dollars per customer on average per month, see what I'm asking?
Yeah, I see what you're asking, um.
I can jump in here, Christie.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but based on your, you know, what's actually billed out uh, under the usage charge, we, this is the projection under the nine dollars and thirty cents for that first phase. And um, that's, you know, that's, uh, make sure I'm looking at the right numbers here. It's only a six percent increase over the current charge of eight seventy-seven, so I don't think that'll have a huge impact on, you know, um, the, the amount of, of flows that's going to be billed out at that level, especially because it's, you know, mostly non-residential, which, um, if they have the flow, that, that's the flow they need generally. Um, so yeah, I don't, I don't think that that would, um, or I feel pretty comfortable saying that, that would, that nine thirty would generate the, um, the revenues that we're projecting within our cash flow analysis.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have a comment, but are we doing discussion now or just doing questions?
Questions?
Okay, we're moving along too, so. Just a reminder.
Do you have a, you have a comment?
I did, yes. So, I know we're not voting on this tonight.
Right.
Yeah. But I just want to share with council how I look at these rates, so it's, it's my, it's my position that we're, we're balancing two things here. One, being a responsible manager of these utilities, so giving them the revenues they need, so they can properly maintain and capitalize these, these investments. But on the other side, is being efficient, okay? And when I look at that last chart, and they show us drop, being above Hood River, if we implant this increase uh, uh, as, as laid out, it'll take us above Hood Rivers, uh, annual bill for sewer and water. I start to go on, hmm, are we being efficient in operators of these utilities? And the, the, the reality in the whole, the rate conversation is that time is kind of a, it's an outlier. And the slower you increase your rates, the more you're efficient and you're frankly competitive, competitive with the market in which we, we have, uh, these conversations about. And so I'm leaning towards the, the alternative one for water, to, to, to put downward pressure on our overall cost of monthly bill. But, but also, I, I feel like still being responsible to the needs of the water utility. The sewer, I'm much less concerned about, we've got a plan, I think the only thing we need to debate is whether we do the sewer winter water average or we do the flat fee. And I'm happy to have that conversation, but when it comes to water, I just wanted to tell this group, I'm leading for, for those reasons, I want to keep pressure on the total costs that we're charging our customers, uh, but also be responsible to the needs of the watering facilities. And, um, you know, that's, I feel like that's how I think about this, thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany?
The only thing with going with one is that it lowers the debt service, lowers how much we put towards the debt service, and I mean, there's a high expectation in the community that we get that paid off as soon as possible. But at the same time, Pete Happy did bring up, councillor Happy brought up a, a good argument as to whether it should be placed on the burden of those living, living here now, or it should be spread out farther to others who are incoming to the system. So, I mean, that, that's the question, what do we want to do with the debt service, maybe, because that's basically, that's the question that we have to resolve.
And I would just like to say that I was on council whenever we did the debt service line. And that was, we started collecting that early, way before the loan first payment was due, because we were going to pay that loan off early, saving the citizens four hundred and seventy thousand in interest. And going with alternative one, that takes that from four hundred and seventy thousand down to eighty-two thousand. And I don't know, are we able to keep the rates not going that high on alternative ones, because we're going to use the debt service that we've saved up, that should have been paid toward this debt?
Is that a question?
No. No, the, this assumes you would keep all the money that's already been collected for that purpose and use it to pay off the debt a little bit early. You wouldn't be tapping into that to use for the operating funds. It's just, it's, the alternative one just assumes that you would decrease the debt service for, for future years. Decer, the debt service charges for future years. But the money that's already been collected would still go towards that purpose.
So we would just collect less on that debt service bonus? And I don't know if that was a resolution or what, we would have to go back and look at that. Because we were, the mayor at that time was very clear that he wanted it to be a line item on the bill. That way, when this debt was paid for, the citizens were done with it. And it's not saying that our sewer plant is, or our water system is going to last that long. It could be, go out and we might incur another loan before this loan's paid. You know, we don't know, because we had a loan when we had to take this loan, you know? So I don't know. Did you, anybody else have anything, Pete?
I just, I just comment on the combined waters who are committing big comparison. And say it's really hard um, to make a, it's helpful with how it comes, but we really don't know how. Efficiently have all these other uh, you know, water uh, sewer departments are actually functioning. And they may have deferred maintenance that hasn't been taken care of, if we catch up with them. Um, there are a lot of things that we don't understand as far as operationally that's behind these numbers. Uh, it's good to be aware of it, but I think that we can't put a whole lot of stock in necessarily trying to be uh, you know. Yeah, we don't really, we can't really compare apples to apples, because we don't really know what is bouncing their budget either.
Who was first, Bernard or Tiffany?
Or how much debt they have? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, we don't, we don't know how much debt they have, so.
Yeah, I, I'd also dispute that, and evidently, when you zero in on one of these utilities. And you go, why are their rates the way they are? You'll get a clearer picture on what's going on behind the scenes. The fact that Redmond's at seven ninety nine, I mean, I asked the city administrator, like, what on earth are they hearing? Were they just neglecting the heck out of their utilities? Or is there something magical they're doing that we all should know about and we should be replicating, you know? He's looking into that, but I think it's worth the conversation. It's my intention that we stay in the bottom half of this, this chart, you know? I don't want to get too high, because again. If I'm a voter, I'm like, why are utility rates so darn high? That's a fair question to ask. And I, what we're doing, if we go with alter, we're, we're pushing to the top of that half instead of the bottom of the half. And again, someone who values efficiency and, 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 you know, and, and uh, and quality. Uh, thi- this, thi- this makes me uncomfortable pushing our, our rates too high. And again, while still being uh, responsible, we need to be responsible, we need to do it. That I will defend, we need any rate player, but do we need to overdo it? And, and, and make their monthly burden higher than necessary? I, that's what I, I hope we're right for.
Thanks, Bernard. Were you down, Tiffany? Alright, we all done?
Alright, so. Can I get consensus to move forward or otherwise we're just going to keep talking in circles? I mean, is, is, does, is council feel like they have? A consensus to actually put forward a resolution to vote on, or do we need to talk about this more?
I think we need.
We can talk about this even more. Because, oh.
I think a workshop would be requested.
Because I, I don't know, uh, or I mean, are you asking for consensus on one, two, or three?
Yes, on, on, on rates, yeah.
Well, I, for me, sewer very clear, they give us one option. I support that. The only question that the council needs to ask is, do we do a flat fee? Or do we do a winter water average user charge? And they showed us the, the two, two structures in that uh. In the previous workshop where they, they, there's a, there's a great spreadsheet on that. Um, I mean, for what it's worth, I lean towards a winter water average uh, charge. Again, it's, it's a, for me, it's a principle of fairness. If there's a, if there's a customer who's using two units of water a month, well, they're only sending two units of water down the sewer line. Why are they paying the same rate as someone who's using, you know, uh, with, it's up to ten, right?
Mm hmm.
They can use ten and they're, they're consuming a lot of water which they pay for, but they're also creating a lot of sewer that the city has to process. They're, they're paying the exact same uh, rate per month. And from a fairness perspective, I don't think that, that should, we, our, 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 our utilities should reflect burden on the utility.
And, and I thought, maybe I need to check my minutes and, on my notes, I thought we decided we were sticking with the flat rate. Because, because A, the, the level of work needed to implement it.
Yep.
And then also, uh, the, I think if I remember, it had a negative impact on some of our smaller users. And it didn't have the effect we thought it would. And so I thought we, we made this decision already.
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm not going crazy, thank you.
Well, I don't know that, but I guess.
Oh, yeah, going crazy for a different reason, yeah.
Sorry.
Tiffany?
So Tiffany, the discussion is just about whether, what we want to do with the debt service on the water. I mean, that's, that's the discussion, what we want to do, do we want to lower it and keep it about, about the same as what it is now? Do we want to keep it as it is, raise it just a little bit more, or do we want to do something in between? Those are the, those are the three options. That, I mean, that's what we have to decide.
Which I, we can do a work session.
You guys want to do a work session on it?
Yeah, I'm not ready.
You have a decision now?
Uh, I understand that maybe you weren't ready to make a decision tonight, but my question is, is what is the impact on the sewer fund? That, at, the longer we kick this down the road, what is the, the impact that that's going to have? Because obviously, we're not going to have it ready for the fiscal year to start, so what is, impact is that going to have on us dipping into reserves?
Um, yeah, so the sooner this gets put into place, the increased sewer rate, the less we have to rely on dipping into reserves to pay for operating costs. So, once this is in place, we can then do a budget amendment, calculate what we think the new total revenue is going to be and go from there. Um, so we, I mean, if this council is confident or consensus on, on sewer, that is a separate resolution than water, so that can move forward. If the, if the discussion is on water. Okay.
Consensus to go forward on the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, flat rate.
Yeah, flat rate.
Flat rate sewer.
Perfect.
Alright, and then we'll do a workshop on the water part. After budget.
Yes, um, would, does this council want Eric and Christie as part of this workshop, or do you feel you have the information you need?
I feel we have the information.
Okay. Perfect.
Yes.
Awesome.
Alright, moving on.
Thank you, Eric, thank you, Christie.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
McCord Creek Bridge Lobbying.
I don't have an introduction, I'm going to pass it straight to Trey.
Trey.
Well, thanks, everybody. Um, kind of journeyed the legislature this session. Um, but I feel like we've made some significant progress um, in the last three weeks. Um, you know, the um. There are a, a lot of requests, or two hundred fifty requests for capital construction. Uh, and we, and all of you have seen the um, uh, in your packet, I, I provided an update to Jordan, so hopefully you've, you've seen that, if you don't, uh, it is in the packet. Um, and so we, you know, we've got over two hundred fifty requests, uh, they match about two billion in uh, total funding. Um, so uh, it's, it's, it is competitive. Um, our request really stands out in my mind, and I've been making this case to everybody that I've talked to, with the legislature. Talk a little bit about who those people are. Um, in that, um, you know, the city's utility uh, by a few measures is the, the smallest electric utility in the state. So the impact is substantial, and the city itself has um, uh, gave a very small operating budget in comparison to this. Um, this, this burden um, that, that was posed on, on me. Um, and along those lines, it's, it wasn't elective, this wasn't something that um, that you're choosing to do. And many of the requests um, before capital construction are requests from cities and other organizations for funding. Because they want to do something or advance something, in fact, there's a number of wastewater treatment and, and water requests uh, in that package. Um, and the, the benefit um, of uh, uh, you know, of this particular project, the replacement of the bridge isn't. To the city alone, the benefit is to everybody who, um, who uses the highway. And, and those are travelers and, and commercial operators uh, as well, so it's, it um. It's quite different, there's also um. You know, potential regional harm, um, the um, the utility, as we talked about it, is uh, hamstrung by this um, this uh, servicing of this loan. And that impedes its ability to continue to make investments in its plant and to, including to harden um, the electric facilities to fire. Which of course is a pretty significant danger in this area and we've seen it in the past. Um, so this is what I've been telling the legislature. And um, and I have, I, 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 I believe um, that the committee, um, the capital construction committee. And I've talked to all the members of that committee, uh, understand this. Um, and um, I think that we have. Um, a fair chance of getting some funding right now. And I'll go through a little, a little bit of that. So uh, when I provided the report last week, um, we had a number of uh, of goals. Um, and, and actions that, that were necessary and had some meetings scheduled last week. Um, we spoke with, I spoke with uh, this uh, the op, the staff and speaker, uh, the House Speaker Fehy. And with her legislative director, um, it was a positive meeting, it was very receptive, I followed up with um, with some email online. Boy, I just discussed about the uniqueness of uh, this request. Um, I had uh, another meeting uh, with Rep uh, Helfrich. Um, you know, uh. We started with uh, with Senator Bottoms, the sponsor for this request, and um, and, and the reason. Mainly was that uh, Helfrich is uh, pretty significantly focused on the replacement of the, of the bridge. And that uh, alone is a hundred and five million dollar request. We think that may be close to a third of good total capital construction funding that ultimately get allocated. So uh, you know, Rep Helfrich is, is um, is under a lot of pressure with that. Um, Senator Bottom um. Uh, is uh, somewhat constrained by that as well, one because Senator Bottom is uh, like Rep Helfrich or in the minority um, in legislature. Uh, which presents uh, political challenges and then um. And, and then, and so, you know, this, this uh, bridge thing is not great timing for us, but um. By the same token, we're only asking for a million dollars, so it's a relatively small request. Um, I talked about uh, our reach to ODOT and um, we met with um, with Representative McLean, who's the chair of. The um, Transportation, Joint Transportation Committee. Um, and they are doing uh, you know, the crazy amount of work to try and pass the main objective of this legislative session. Which is a, a transportation package that will address all of the state's tran- transportation issues. And in fact, when I had met with uh, one of the um, the co-chairs, Senator Gerard of the um, Capital Construction Committee. We discussed whether or not we would move this into that transportation package because it's related. Ultimately, um, and I'm glad we didn't do that, because that package is, is, it appears um, just from the rumors around. The building is um, is uh, is going to be challenged to pass. Um, so uh. So we met with uh, Rep McLean and um, she graciously offered to help us connect with um, with folks. And she is kind of the ODOT whisperer at the legislature. Um, she requested that we wait until um, until Sonny died to do that. And so um, that is an option that we still have, we can follow up and, and utilize that connection to try and move ODOT. If, if, if we don't get all or at least some of um, the funding that we're seeking in the capital construction. Uh, the other item um, that uh, I committed to work on was to uh, do our reach to our congressional deleg- delegation. I've done that, um, I had conversations with um, Senator Merkley's staff, um, several people on Senator Merkley's staff. Uh, and uh, I talked to Sarah, who's the regional um, director uh, for uh, Cascade Locks and surrounding areas. Um, and we shared a conversation, finally connected a conversation on uh, on Thursday. Um, I explored, sent her a fairly detailed email about these, about the issue and then uh, provided some additional verification, asked questions. Um, and she admitted to go back to um, to their team and talk about how that might help. So uh, I will be following up again on that this week. Um, we also had a really good communication uh, with Congressman Dexter's staff. Um, and her uh, regional staffer um, was fortuitously a former staffer for Representative Nose, who, as you may remember, is the um, co-chair for Ca- uh, capital construction. He called uh, Rep Nose and they had a conversation about this, I propped him um, for that conversation. And um, uh, it, it was a positive outcome, Rep Nose said that our uh, request was being uh, seriously considered. Was the words for that, so um, I, I am encouraged by all of this. Um, you know, with the caveat that um, it still is very competitive and. You just don't know what's going to happen when they all sit down, there are six important people at the legislature who are sitting in a room like this. And making decisions about who gets what money, none of us get to sit in that room, say, who they can stay. So that, that process, I think has maybe taken them a little bit longer than they thought it would. I expected there would be some kind of resolution uh, by this week, um, with Sonny die approaching quickly the constitutional day, that's the. Twenty ninth to the thirtieth. Um, and then the uh, uh, their, their goal was June nineteenth, but I don't think they're going to make that, but you never know. Uh, what else? Um, I, I think that's mainly it, um, a lot of follow-up this week that I'll do to just try and cinch down the support that we do have. Um, and then get some clarity, I actually had a text exchange with Rep Nose uh, earlier today, just to see if he had any uh, news for us. And he did not, I took the opportunity to send him a picture of um, you know, uh, an electric uh, cable on a pole under a banyan tree. And a picture of the evil creep fire, um, because I think it's important that they visualize what the potential uh, impact is. If um, if, if, if you guys can't, aren't fully equipped to um, to deal with all these issues, so. Um, I'm available if you have any questions as well.
Any questions?
So, when we met on that L C lobby day, we, we met before we hired you, we met Bottom. He was like, give me a call, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever you need me to do. And I know you've talked to him multiple times.
Yes.
I assume he's still uh, uh, you know, animated and supporting us.
Yes.
Does he have any sway on that group of six that are going to be making this decision or what's his?
Well, um, I, you know, again, it, it's challenging when you're in the minority. Now, he is the minority leader at the Senate, so he, he garnered some um, you know, favor in sort of the pecking order of the leadership for that reason. Uh, we know that he won't be uh, running again um, for reasons such as described in the media. Um, and, and so that, I, I don't, I don't know how that impacts, it's probably somewhat limited, but it's probably always in the back of. Leadership's mind is wondering if the purpose of whether or not they're going to have to continue to, to work with in the future.
And then just one other thing, you know, so I, I did that testimony, as you guys are aware, and. I was, you know, kind of blown away, it was a long line, you know, everyone in two minutes. And it was a huge kind of like, it felt like a factory, you know, pushing through everyone's request. And I sat there for about an hour and, and listened to other folks make requests. And I don't know, I mean, I, 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 I agree with, you know, what Trey is telling us, that. Our, our request is, is a much more substantive and uh. Uh, I think uh, compelling story than many of the requests I heard. I mean, they're trying to get, you know, uh, you know, uh. Money to like redo their, 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 their water treatment plant, it's like, well, that's what your rate players are for, you know? It's like, why are you going to the state for that? And like every kind of housing project you can imagine, you know? And again, none of those, you were wrong by a state agency. We have that, we were wrong by a state agency, and I feel like that's going to push us hopefully to the top. We'll see, we'll see.
Good. Thanks for all your hard work and stuff, getting out there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if, I mean, I I believe in the cause, so it's been, um, it's it's been one that the the. Undertaken wholeheartedly, so appreciate the opportunity.
Yes. Is anybody else having any questions or anything?
Want to say, I think, comment that if you follow up with a couple like two photos, I think that, you know, storytelling is really effective. With, you know, moving forward and picturing purpose of the mortgage, right? So, and we think about. You know, the Columbia Gorge is really a treasure in Oregon and how uh, you know, devastating that fire was. I think it's good to just keep. Question on that, I think, to keep detail. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's fine with the council, I'd like to have Trey as a standing item um on agendas moving forward until this session's wrapped up. I think kind of at that point where we need bi-weekly updates. Yeah, if assuming you can, you can make.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, of course.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearings? None?
Nope.
And action items adopt ordinance four six nine and ordinance providing for the reduction, control and prevention of loud and. Racist noise, repealing ordinance four 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 and four four five.
I'm gonna let you take the lead on this one. Yeah.
Uh, okay. Um, just to try to explain to council, a few months ago, uh, Council Pruitt came in. But there, she was trying to help that member in the community uh regarding ordinance four forty-four and four forty-five. Uh, back in the past, we had ordinance number four forty-five, and then an amendment came up. Well, when council. Adopted that amendment, they adopted a complete ordinance forty-four and forty-five. So, it's actually in our codified ordinances online twice. So, so this ordinance, it's the same ordinance, it just has a new number, so we can wipe out. The codified forty-four and forty-five and add this one and just that one. Now, does that make sense? And it was posted previously and sent to you all if you want to do it in one meeting.
But, you know, what the problem was is I went, because it was four forty-four and four forty-five, I didn't know. I, because I went to, I went to Kathy and I'm like, which one is it? And so, that just kind of started this whole process when it was we. Had four forty-five, then they made a change and added four forty-five. Or we had four forty-four, and then they added something and changed, and so it was just like, it's so in order for the citizen to be able to go. Make a request, they would have had to ask for one forty-four and four forty-five, and this in, this will just make it four forty-nine, so that's all. So, I I will make a motion to adopt ordinance four sixty-nine, or the providing for the reduction, control and prevention of loud and raucous noise. Repealing ordinance says four forty-four and four forty-five.
A second.
I do need to re- assuming nobody um is against it, I still need to read the title in full twice for the single passage to go through. So unless anybody objects, I will now read it, the title in full twice.
Did you need me to say that title often?
No, no. Okay. Ordinance number four six nine and ordinance providing for the re- reduction, control and prevention of loud and raucous noise within the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon. And repealing ordinance number four 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 and ordinance number four four five. Second time, ordinance number four six nine, an ordinance providing for the reduction, control and prevention of loud and raucous noise within the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon. And repealing ordinance number four 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 and ordinance number four four five.
During discussion. And all in favor, say aye. Oppose. All right, we're adopt the ordinance number four six nine, repealing four 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 and four four five, passed unanimously.
All right, will go into effect in thirty days.
Committee appointment.
All right, um, below on this sheet is a breakdown of how many vacant positions each city committee has. And who has applied for each committee. Uh, planning commission has one vacancy with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Tourism has two vacancies with both terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. The budget committee is full. Uh, we have a single applicant today. Uh, Butch Miller has applied for the planning commission. Mayor Wood has recommended the applicant for appointment. Uh, the council can either appoint or not appoint the applicant.
Which more to the reading, planning, right? How's that do? All right, Tiffy, do you have anything to say? Any discussion from anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. All right, Butch Miller is on planning commission. Thank you unanimously. All right, committee report. Tourism.
Uh, yeah, just the one committee report tourism, and I will hand it over to Janice.
All right, um, so it reported in my report, um, to be in your pocket, and yeah. So the uh highlights are that the U T M and visitor center have been open for the season since March first. Um, we are seeing a significant increase in usage of our visitor center as a service. Um, we're at fifty-one percent from twenty twenty-four, for people coming in specifically with the intention of asking a question. And we attribute that to a couple of different things. Um, in general, your rear awareness and also. Getting the community on board with knowing that the visitor center and the museum, with your frontline staff members at the director's staff can say, oh, go ask the museum about that. That's where the visitor centers. Um, we've also gotten increased signage and increased facility and um. A big part of that is going to be that we implemented a separate listing on Google Maps, so when you Google visitor Cascade Locks, it pops up that there's a visitor info center at the museum. Um. And that has gone out, spawned Google and into other databases using a platform called Local, which is an optimization platform. That get lets you update all of your database entries with like two clicks. It's amazing. Um, and that's something that we can access for free. Um. Familiarization tours, we've gotten some fan tours through town, and what that is, is it's a way of helping people learn um. About the experiences that you offer to support direct referrals to your community. Um, by making sure that they get to experience it themselves. So, we brought a bus full of folks from Travel Oregon in last month. Um, to do a special um indigenous tourism experience on May twentieth, and then we have our frontline fam tour coming on this Thursday. Um, so these are people who are working at the front desk of hotels and visitor centers, uh, both in the Portland metro area and around the Mount Big Forge region. And they will get to come and experience Cascade Locks so that they can make recommendations to their guests. Um, marketing, investments and press coverage, we're getting some pretty good um coverage, and a big huge part of that is the network effect of being collaborative. So the fact that we're working better with Travel Oregon and with the region, um, is giving us tangible access to those larger P R budgets. So, um. Being in good communication and keeping those groups up to date means that these places that have much bigger advertising budgets than we do are investing in our community. Um, so we've gotten some really great new features from Travel Oregon. Uh, we got included in um a travel and leisure article, and that was something that was. Put together, I think that came from Travel Oregon's office, that it was communicated to us through the R D M O. Um, but basically, working with these places that have these bigger budgets is helping us get P R that we were not accessing on our own. I got to attend the Oregon Media Marketplace events on March eighteenth, which was a big party that they held for national media outlets to come. And meet people from each of the different regions, and I got to represent Cascade Locks with that. And then we've gotten some conferences and training in. Uh, a lot of the spring is a big time of year for conferences. Um, as part of our commitment to developing our local uh workforce, we got to send Amber Alvey, our visitor services administrator. To the governor's conference for tourism this year, um, while I stayed at the museum, and that meant that she got to get her network better developed. And she got to come back with some really great uh actionable re- um recommendations to the committee. And then we both were able to attend Destination Bootcamp, which is an intensive training that Travel Oregon does. I went last year, and then we both got to go this year. Um, and they held it in Hood River this year, so that's part of why we got that fam tour in name, was a part of that training. Um, and so what that is, it is a training for tourism professionals on how to enact a stewardship approach to managing your destination. Um, and so that's um looking at tourism development through a stewardship lens, where you are centering your community and doing community-led initiatives. That help the people who live here in addition to promoting tourism. So there's things that you can do um. With your investments to be able to make your destination a place that's both livable and welcoming. Um. Uh, we helped prepare the budget for the tourism committee this year. A big part of that was forecasting and paying attention to the industry trends. Um, so as of April fourteenth, Travel Oregon was budgeting uh to keep pace with inflation and no growth for the upcoming year. Um, other news outlets are a lot more dire, so we tried to balance that and just recommended holding the line uh for T L T in your budget. Um, the city of Cascade Locks is classically budgeted pretty conservatively for T L T anyway, so I think that you're gonna be right on with what you have. In um your draft budget. Uh, and a big part of that conversation, uh, because this is a contract renewal year and the R F P is offset from the budget cycle. We started talking a little bit about what the future of contracting, we um tourism out at the city looks like. Um, and it's led to a lot of conversations about the scope of work that the museum is performing, because we have kind of a nebulous. Um, not specific contract for the admin services. It's a very, well, a broad list on the R F P that was put out. And then we also have the handshake agreement for the visitor center, which means that we have a lot of latitude to make decisions, um. That. Um, it just, it brought up a lot of conversation, I think, um, and one of the recommendations that we have received. From an S F P S and expert program at Travel Oregon was that we compile a list of all of the duties that we are performing. Um, and then highlight which ones are actually in the contract, and that is attached to this report. I won't read it to you. Uh, it's like by much as long, but. Um, I think that that is good justification in the committee's vision for seeing um full-time support. And I think that that is what we set out to prove, so that there is a full-time job doing this in Cascade Locks. Um, at my quarter one report, the council had asked for this to be more recommendation-based. So I come to you today with some recommendations about the overall restroom bathroom facility specifically, um. So, basically proactive management is key for good bathroom management. Um, people are more respectful of spaces that are clean and nice. And that's just what it is for a healthy restroom facility. Um, there were some. So making sure that you have that regular maintenance and repairing your broken fixtures and proactive repeat removal is huge. Um, security cameras can help mitigate vandalism, and then there were some like really minor changes that you could make, like painting walls with dark colors. Makes it less of a blank canvas for those graffiti um vandals. And you can also use some perfect ear assist coatings uh to help with maintaining that and making it easier to clean. Um, some actions to consider with this were included contracting out the painting and then possibly an art installation. So, last year I sat on the um Regional Strategic Investments Grant Committee, and one of the investments that we made. Was to do urals in the public restrooms at the Sandy River Delta. Uh, so that was something that the Forest Service had requested as a potential solution for vandalism at those bathrooms, and that project is complete. And if you go to the bathroom there now, there's paintings of trees um inside the bathroom. Um, which the theory was that it will mitigate repeat, and they're in a group that experienced, um, we'll see how that plays out, but. Uh, my second recommendation is, um. Uh, so this came out of Destination Bootcamp. Um, I, a big, my favorite part of attending that training is that you get one-on-one consultation time. With some of these like really great people that are been doing this for a really long time, have a lot of experience, um. I got to meet with Kevin Yugen, who's the Vice President of Destination Stewardship at Travel Oregon, and I talked to him a little bit of some of the capacity challenges. That we were having, um, and he suggested that we reach out to them about potentially doing some kind of micro version of the Oregon Tourism Studio. Which is a program that Travel Oregon offers to help destinations manage themselves strategically. Um, I think that this is a good move for us to pursue, just because, I mean, tourism is one of the ways that you can increase revenue. Without raising your taxes, right? So if we're investing our money efficiently and we're doing uh, um. Good stewardship with these funds, you could grow your base that way, um. If you're doing things like going out and recruiting um hotel developers, like that's something that we could be working with, the port to support. Um. It's a, it's a way that you could increase your revenue, because you have this ordinance that does support. Tourism development as a source of revenue in Cascade Locks, and that's something that we could do. Um, does anyone have any questions here?
Yes, definitely. Do you have a couple of questions? Um. Uh, what is the purpose of tourism now? That's uh back, it seems when I first started on council, it was heads and beds. It seems like that's, that purpose is kind of changed.
So you can, um, heads and beds is a good quantitative way to couch um the number of visitors that you're getting, because at the end of the day, that's where. You know, a lot of the tax comes from is getting people to come and spend the night in your community. Uh, but there's a broader impact to people visiting and um. The kind of justification for how you manage attracting people to do the heads and beds since this Friday the night. Is evolving to include um the other investments as well, to make it more than just staying at a hotel for the night, right? Um, so developing um food and beverage experiences that make people wanna come stay, developing, um. Uh, outdoor recreation experiences that make people wanna come stay, um.
So I'm wondering, does does the tourism, do they have like a vision statement or do?
They do, not at this time.
So, something. Maybe.
I would, um, I would assume that that would come out of doing these tourism studio, if they did pursue that. If they do any kind of strategic planning, they'll come up with some kind of vision that would go with that, um. Last, last year they met six times, right? So that's part of having the advisor committee and making a forum is, um, they they had a lot of volunteer turnover. And uh, it's the, uh, it's the latest projects.
So in that, in this report, on the third page, I'm wondering, um, uh, on that first yellow highlight there. Um, applying for the grants, I'm wondering if you can name, uh, what kind of grants we have received.
We haven't received any, um, I did put in, we put in applications for a program called Recreation Betty in December, which was a. A bike tourism project that we had proposed, but they were only going to select four projects from the whole state. I was not selected. Um, and then we put in a letter of interest for um. A Travel Oregon competitive grant uh to do strategic planning, and they are not funding capacity built in this year.
And then a little bit farther down, it says writing press releases, you may have been, like, how many are on it?
Uh, that isn't, it it, it's more responsive when there's new things coming to town and when there's exciting news. Um, we're more likely to review press releases instead of going out from Travel Oregon or from the region than we are to write our own press releases. Um, quarterly, I need to write one or two, um, personally.
And then finally, on the, on the next page, it says, uh, that entry visitor and information faculty in a moment of a lot of.
Uh, that is front of me, but I can provide that for you if you would be interested in seeing it. Um, I have lumped that together as the percentage based in the report, but um. I I don't have that number off, I have a.
Did Bernard have to stand up? No, no.
I do, but, okay, do me a.
Thank you, um, since your reports are always so complete, and appreciate that. And as far as press releases, I do see, because I follow the social media a lot, help with the Main Street social media. That you do sort of, that is like the modern day press release, the digital sharing, and it gets shared in other counties, because I follow. Um, another, you know, visit Hood River County, which I wish it said Hood River County, visit Hood River. Um, and so thank you for that and um for um cross-promoting with Main Street sometimes, because as you mentioned. Uh, in one of these things that you went to when, um. You make a town successful for the people that live there, tourists also feel that success and want to come back. And so, yeah, I appreciate that, that all of that, because I've been to a lot of these meetings, major visitor, the idea that, um. Keeping our town looking good and safe is a, is a part of getting that good review. We're in a modern age where. One visitor can make a good or bad review. We're in a modern age where one visitor can make a good or bad review. It's almost like they're doing the media for Cascade Box, you know? So those, we appreciate that you're looking at all of those things and things.
I was just looking at a uh, really appreciate the details and the notes, um and the appendix. Uh visitor services and administrator, effort to help these tourism related tasks. And I think that stood out to me was serving the. Admin fifty percent of her time and the first anonymous writer in the meetings. And I know that that was really labor intensive here as well. And one of the we provided on action minutes and meeting our official Zoom recording for our meeting minutes. Would that be beneficial to look at doing and what would it take to implement that?
Um yeah, I think it would take coordinating with city administrator Bennett to make sure that we get that updated procedure.
This seemed like it.
It is very labor intensive.
Better time to be better spent on higher level activities than backing up what others decide. Just a comment.
Good night.
Yeah, so. I'm thrilled to see that our visitor. Our visits are starting increasing from last year to the visitor center slash museum. Fifty-nine percent is a wonderful, you know, uh figure. Just because I'm curious, on a given weekend, I assume the traffic is busier on weekends and week, weekdays. How many folks come in?
Uh Sundays are special. Heat day. Um it varies based on the weather, so if it is raining or if it is hot, you might get five or six. And if it is a gorgeous weekend, that's Memorial Day and seventy-five degrees and everyone wants to go to Multnomah Falls, we'll get a hundred.
Yeah, okay, wow. And then, can you give an update on, there was a conversation about maybe moving the museum. And the visitor center deal, the hardware store and for, what's the latest there?
I haven't heard a recent update from the port on that. The port is negotiating with the property owner and I am not a part of that negotiation. So I don't have updated information on that until they're ready to speak publicly about it.
Okay. And then. We alluded to a little earlier on the restrooms, so. I very much supportive of having tourism help uh take on the cost. Of keeping those bathrooms in as good a shape as we can. And I feel like that's a good use of, of tourism dollars because. And just like she said, and I, and I can, you know, I can vouch for that. I mean, I live, I see the tourists come to that, good and beeline that restroom, you know? Even though thirsty has, my opinion, it's the cleanest bathroom in town, so it's got a good coffee, you can't just, you know. You know, at least that's my idea of the world. Uh uh so, so I, I'm supportive of that. Do you have ideas on who would be doing the cleaning? Have you, have you guys discussed that or is this something between?
Yeah.
Tourism and the city to kind of sort through?
Yeah, you would need to go out for R F P for that. And I know that um when the committee members reached out to the city of Mooters. Their vendor does not serve Cascade Box, so we would need to look for something closer to us. Um we don't have a specific vendor in mind to propose to you for that.
Okay, well, I think it's a great budget item for us to try to seal up and uh. And again, for yet some general fund dollars for those critical resources like buyer, EMS and police. You know, COVID forced me to, so.
Yes.
Denise. Thank you.
Oh, and it doesn't, I mean, the council talked about it once before, since tourism could meet often for not being quorum. Has there been discussion in tourism to reduce the size of that committee? I know it would change ordinance, I think, change some of our documents. But not a big committee.
They have not had any discussion about reducing the size of the committee.
And do you have an opinion on that? Just so we can get quorum.
I think that if we were to do any kind of strategic planning, that it would involve looking at the like form and function of the committee. And I'd be interested to see where the conversation goes. One of, um best part of the budget discussion, there was some talk about like, what would it look like to hire certain staff? What would it look like to fully outsource this to a vendor? What would it look like to continue to run it as an advisory committee? And they're not ready to make that decision with the information they have. They need to do that strategy first before they can make any kind of recommendations. Um and I can't speak for them on that.
Thank you. I know in the many, because I've missed many tourism, Main Street. Marketing economic development folks this year from Oregon. That often the Main Street is a part of that committee too, because some of the cities, so you're right, it needs a strategic planning. Yeah, and.
Yes, and frequently what you'll see with those types of organizations is you'll see a board that's made up of people that are in the industry. Where you've got like a certain number of hotel um representatives on that board. Where the people that are like actively promoting it are the ones that are making those decisions. Um but again, they don't have a strategic plan, so I can't speak for them on that.
So uh Bernard sparked your question. So since now we're, we're not making progress on the museum moving. Have, have we turned over the collection sheet report or is that still pending?
Uh we have not yet. I was going to update that. My, my report um. They port gave us a contract to review to give, to sign over the museum collection to them. Ruben approved it. They're good. It should be on the next port commission for approval. So that is moving forward.
Okay, and I just want to second what Councilor Lewis said earlier. I think that using Oregon Tourism Studio to go through a planning process to agree on about our mission, you know, or kind of focus. It's, it's something all of our committees have. I was so secure and given the name of the word. And then having a conversation about your structure of board also. Second, that's that thought because again, it is a challenging a, a, a forum. And yeah, maybe it makes sense to be, if not small, to differently structured, so, yeah.
Um one of the notes that I did have from their meetings is that they haven't had a joint session with the city council since January twenty twenty-four. And there's a lot of new members. Um and we did a review as part of their, um one of their work sessions. To do the council procedures and it said in the procedures that the council would do a joint session with the committees every year. Um so if we could get on the calendar for that at some point this year, that would be.
And um while you're here, Jess, I talked to city administrator Bennett to see where we're dropping the ball. Like when these people join these committees, about giving them the procedures and all this stuff. So he was going to work on that, like how we could be better at setting these people up for success.
Right.
The other thing is the bathrooms are a big concern of mine. They do not look inviting at all. They look horrible on a good day. Um I'm very interested in us painting the mural because it may stop the graffiti that's happening in these bathrooms. Um at least try it. I mean, it'd be interesting to keep updated with the Sandy, the one that they did out in Sandy to see what happens.
I, I'm curious as well. I haven't gotten to go visit it yet. Yeah.
That Delta Park?
At the Delta Park, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
It, it's a big graffiti determined department, the murals. You rarely see a mural face.
I think that would be so much nicer than what we're seeing now.
Okay, I mean, for what it's worth, we've got some tremendous artists in town.
Yes.
I know several who could probably knock that out in a day.
Yes, I, yeah.
So. Our honor.
It would be a huge.
Yeah, yes. Thank you so much.
I have a bit of an offbeat question. Did the city see any impact in tourism from the Martin family car discovery?
Uh I only have a little information for that. Um yes. It was um a little bit. There's a lot more um coverage at the national level for the city and we definitely saw people who came in and were curious about it. But it was pretty short-lived and um, yeah.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, food and beverage tax discussion.
Okay. The fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five council goals included researching increased and stable funding sources for the fire and EMS department. This goal was reaffirmed as a top priority for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. Chief Logan and I began researching the budgetary needs of the department in spring twenty twenty-four. We also began researching funding options to meet the need. The fire and EMS department is currently heavily subsidized by the general fund, which is not uncommon. But puts pressure on our limited resources. Chief Logan and I have determined that any funding source would need to provide roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. To make a significant impact and relieve the pressure for both departments. This new revenue source would replace additional funds provided by the general fund, except the forty-two percent of property tax that will still go to the fire and EMS department. Ensuring we are not working in a silo, we created a task force consisting of Councilor Keller, volunteer firefighter Baker and local business owner Olvera in the fall of twenty twenty-four. We discussed all options, including property tax increases, another increase in the EMS fee, moving to a special district and prepared food and beverage tech, tax. The task force determined that a prepared food and beverage tax was the most equitable and simplest source of revenue. Results of the task force were, uh task force research were presented to council on March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Council provided consensus to staff to move forward and draft an ordinance and policies for council review and deliberation. Presented now as a draft resolution, ordinance, business guide and supporting data to review. The resolution is authorizing the ordinance to go to a vote of the people on the November fourth ballot. If the vote is successful, council will then need to approve the ordinance that will go into effect on July first, twenty twenty-six. The deadline to approve the resolution, submit the ballot measure to the county uh to put it on the ballot is August fifteenth. The ordinance sets a seven percent tax on food and beverage, food on prepared food and beverages uh designed for immediate consumption. A tax for review or a copy of the resolution, ordinance, draft business guide, a city support mailer. A uh PAC support mailer and specific pages of the campaign finance manual regarding PACs. A link to the entire manual is below. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed the resolution and ordinance. Staff are looking for consensus to move forward to put the res, resolution up for a vote in July and put the measure on the November fourth ballot. Once approved, staff will work to develop a uh compliant campaign strategy. In the, in the conversation staff have had with the public and restaurants, we have received support. However, the city will get pushback from the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. So as stated, is a draft of the resolution and a draft of the ordinance. Um it, the basic guide um that we'll give out to businesses to help implement this. Added to your table tonight but was not in the packet was um. Call numbers from the fire department. And if you look at that bottom one with the total calls, so it's if this one, it's got the pink, blue, yellow and gray on it. If you look at the bottom of resident versus non-resident in twenty twenty-two, we are at sixty-six point four six percent non-resident. Twenty twenty-three with sixty-five point four six and twenty twenty-four with sixty-four point nine eight. So we're right around sixty-five percent of all of their calls are non-residents.
Is that a good question?
Yes.
Well, I guess, what, uh what circumstances would a non-resident be calling for fire service? Can you explain that? I'm just trying to.
Trail rescues, first response on the highway. I mean, most of our calls are really not even in the city limits. They're on I eighty-four or trail rescues.
Just rescues are passed by and then fired up.
Yes, I believe, I believe so, is what he put them under. Yep. Yeah.
So on the section thirty, uh point six of the resume. Um third purchase from a nonprofit organization or service of temporary defined as operating four or fewer times for calling here. We used to have plans of polish. Um it was a weekly, a weekly meal, uh low-cost meal for the um seniors. Is that, so that that would only qualify for like.
I would need to do more research on that one, but I think the ordinance does have a carve-out for uh meals to senior citizens. Let me see if I can find it. Okay, yeah. It, it's, yeah, it's a lot. Um and I, I don't know if you saw um Councilor Seager's questions. Um three other cities, Yahtz, Cannon Beach and Ashland um all have a food tax, they're up five percent. That I've talked to all three of them, that I'm aware none of them have been legally challenged. Um I maybe I've missed it, but I haven't seen anything. Yahtz, Cannon Beach and Ashland. Ashland's actually had there since like the nineties. It's been a place for quite a while. Um Cannon Beach, I think, is the most recent in twenty twenty-two. Um and then Yahtz was around two thousand in there. I don't remember the exact date. Uh but none of this is, is reinventing the wheel. This is um went through both of them. Most of it is based off of Cannon Beach. And they kind of grabbed the parts from the other two that kind of fit what we needed, so.
Tiffany?
So I assume that you'll have some sort of. I don't know, a spreadsheet or something, calendar that'll come up and say, and how, how would you monitor? Like the totally making sure, so you'll just like March, June.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, well.
Or you go through and see who have the, the, they approved. Let's put in the application.
Yep.
And then you'll go, I just, yeah, because they, um, yeah. This, it's different than paying bills. I, I get that, but I, I feel like we can, we can lose.
Yes, we'll have a staff member dedicated to, to this program. Yeah.
Well, in, in addition to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I myself am for this and we really need the community to know that for, to keep our public safety is a big bill to the community. Not only police do we need, but we need fire and EMS. So we need to get everybody on board and get this voted in. So like, so it takes the burden off the um general fund. What was I going to say? I lost my train of thought.
That's good. This is the line that you're about to share. Um the city support mailer you referenced in the staff of sorts.
Yeah, so that.
That progression, is that?
That is this one here. So the city of Gresham put this one out and all it does is state the current facts of the city. It doesn't mention anything about the, the ballot measure, voting yes or no. It just states that in the past twenty years, Gresham's population has risen nineteen percent, but minimum fire staffing has only increased nine percent. So they're, they're stating the facts and their issues. Whereas the other one, the PAC one. I mean, ask people to vote yes, tells them to vote yes and gives out statistics. I mean, more detailed sta- statistics. And I know in prior years, when, when Councilor Seager was in my position, there were issues when I think a different levy was trying to be passed. The city has, once it's officially on the ballot or submitted to the county, we have to be very careful on what we can say to the public. But a PAC is kind of like the Wild West. They can do a lot more. I mean, they shouldn't lie, obviously. Um but they have a lot more freedom than the city does.
And so i- in order to advocate for this in PAC, we need to take on that responsibility so that the city just like.
To do the heavy lifting. And, and obviously you seven can go knocking on doors, Chief Logan go knocking on doors. Um I'm a little more limited because I'm technically always on the clock. Um so I can't really do it in my capacity. Other than sharing these statistics, kind of this is, this right here is kind of the limit of what we can do and the burden that we have placed on us. Just because of our A S A.
We talked about the, the burden and our staffing levels.
And what, what we would do with the money. So if, if I went out and said, okay, we pass this, that frees up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the general fund. The general fund is going to do this with it, that's a violation. Because now we're telling people what we're going to do with the money if it passes. We can't do that. It's, it's really annoying, but that's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's a couple of things here. So. One of the other points I made in my review was the single event food tax. Which sets the rate at two hundred and fifty dollars uh a day. And you know, I, I, I have a friend who worked for a food vendor. It's like, at two hundred and fifty, I mean, how much money? How much money do you make in a day? It's like, I mean, you may even make a thousand, like, so they're paying twenty-five percent of their proceeds.
No, no, it goes up to, so they'd still pay the seven percent, but it stops at two hundred and fifty. There's a cap at two fifty. So they could, they could come in and make twenty thousand dollars at P C T days. They still only pay two fifty.
That's how it reads.
That's not how I'm reading it. Says like it's, it, what shall be, it's uh, for those of us, uh section seven, two. And food purchased from a single event temporary food and drug offender shall be taxed at a flat rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Right, that's.
That's.
That didn't sound like up to.
Oh, did I? Okay.
Section, section seven, point two. My backside. Point two. It's not. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I may do it wrong. It is section nine. No, section.
Not section two.
Sorry, sorry. Well, it's just like, oh, my needs all, my pack is all messed. Okay, so it's sec- it would be section two.
Yes.
Point two.
Yeah, yeah.
Section two, number of day.
Food purchase from single event.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
Oh, okay. I think I, I meant to change that. Okay, I will update that. Yes, yeah, I guess that's why your, your question confused me. So it'll, they'll still be collected the, the seven percent, but it'll stop at two hundred and fifty dollars.
Up two.
Okay, so, sorry.
No, I think I'm missing page. I don't know. What did you say? Oh, maybe not. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Figure out my.
So. So to me, the, the, uh, the biggest hurdle with this is, you know, having, a reluctant agreement from vendors, you know, our, our restaurants, the folks should be impacted by the tax, because it does. I know they say they pass it on, but you reduce their ability, their pricing margin for everything they sell when you impose this, this food beverage tax. I'm not disputing the validity. I think it's very, very important. I think it's a great solution, but the impact's a real one. I feel like, we're being honest, we need to acknowledge that. Um, so, so on this single event, again, understanding their world. Is there, you know, the point of sale, they call POS, you know, are, are those easily? Because they're gonna do, they, they do, you know, they go around, and these are like traveling things, you know?
Yeah.
Are they gonna be able to implement a seven percent, you know, point of sale change to their whole menu list, you know? Like show up a day in Cascade Locks, isn't that easy to do? Do we know that?
Probably not.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, I, I've never run a restaurant, so I couldn't tell you.
From my understanding, talking to Mr. Nance at Buddy's, it's seven percent witch items. Oh, yeah, it's not that hard. Their point of sale systems are so easy.
They're set up for that.
Okay.
They're not only one of those sales tax.
Yeah.
I'm not getting it, man.
Like, if they go to Washington, they have to do it as well. Like, the POS systems are set up for, for any of the states, because only, I mean, they all have sales tax.
Okay. You go ahead.
Go ahead, Tiffany.
Yeah, so point of sales are easy to do. I think, I think the question that you were asking is raising the price to seventy pers- seven percent to be able to reflect that. But, um, what, uh, have, uh, ca- caterers? So somebody hires a caterer in the river, and they come and serve the food here. We're gonna charge them seven percent. How is that, how is that? How is that gonna work? How, how are you gonna know if somebody's hired a caterer, who's come to town, um, catered something? And how, how, how are you gonna be able to chase after them for that? I don't.
I, I can't tell you the exact mechanism, because we haven't developed it yet. Um, but again, we did, we'd probably have our, our finance clerk position. They'd probably oversee this program, work with tourism, work with the port. Figure out what events are going on in town. It will, it will take some legwork. It's not, I mean, it's not gonna be easy.
The answer, I mean, that's how, uh, that's how it works for our business too, the taxes take it on where those goods or services are delivered. It's not where they're purchased from. Um, so if you buy something, and it's, I haven't delivered to, you know, put it at that counter, you're gonna have to pay sales tax, and put it at that counter, it's just how you look here. Uh, you buy something, an appliance, and you sold it, and you buy it from a store in Oregon, but you have it delivered to your home in Washington. They're gonna charge sales tax more. But if you pick it up at the showroom in Portland, you're not gonna pay sales tax, right?
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, it's just, that's just how it all, but how do you audit that? How do you catch it? You know, there's, I think there's risk that people could, you know, maybe try to screw the system. But the penalty, if they're caught, is, you know, back taxes and interest penalties.
Requires honesty, but I mean, you know, I, uh, and it could be just ignorance. They might not even know that there's a seven percent. Uh, it would have to be some sort of indication that if you're in a new business and you ask a lot of solid food, and you're this, you're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, and there's only a couple of places that would host a caterer that's not in town. That's probably the, the park would be the port. Maybe the best western, but I mean, Gorgeous obviously would cater their own, T I B would cater their own events. So I think the, the tracking it down would be, I mean, yes, be some legwork, but it's not like we're having fifteen different weddings every weekend with fourteen different caterers. I mean, it is a limited scope.
Don't you ask these other three towns?
On, on this specific item, I have not yet, no. Yeah. Agreed, yeah.
That seems, um, tedious, I guess.
Yep. But I think that's, that'll be a, a minor part of our collection. Again, we're talking about, you know, our, our big three, at least in my mind. Um, East Wind, T I B, and Bridge Side are kind of our big three restaurants, and then the, and, and now Extopa, correct, yeah. And they're gonna be, they're gonna be set. It's kind of like our, our lodging tax. Ninety percent of our money comes from the hotels. That aren't, and it's, and it's then that ten percent, the Airbnb's that we gotta chase down.
And Gorgeous is, I, I think they're own caterer for most of their events.
Yeah.
So they're, and they, I think they're doing quite a few weddings.
They are. Yep, that's kind of their main th- push is, is weddings and events.
But they're not, they're not gonna have outside weddings coming in, they're doing.
Probably not. I mean, it may happen, but probably not.
They had a wedding, they wanted their own caterer, yeah.
Some venues, like, it's restricted, they have, you know, like, how to use their approved venues, and I don't know what their rules are.
Yeah, yeah, we would, yeah, we would do that research.
All right, okay, so on that theme, so I understand that the stern wheeler uses Gorgeous to cater for all the support their operations. They do brunch cruises and blah, blah, blah. So where does the fee fall on them? Or where does that fee fall for that, that purchase?
Uh, that would be a good question, because probably by the time they're eating it, they're not technically in the city limits. They're out on the river. So I, I, I don't, I would assume they'd pay it, but I'd have to do some research on that one. That's, that is a kind of an odd one.
And I think that that address changed.
Oh, uh, that, somebody else's.
Yeah.
I've heard that, somebody.
Um, I feel like in this thousand degree heat and a sweating, whilst worrying about the collection is a policy discussion, much similar to we did with the electrical department and the deposit thing. Secondly, it has been expressed upon me, and the, the point that set home for me was doubling our property taxes. Put an unfair burden on the people that are not using this service. And then John, uh, Chief Logan, again, my other thing that really set home was if I'm having a heart attack, do I want to wait thirty minutes for an ambulance? And that, so how are we going to fund this? If I don't want to double my property tax that I'm paying to the city, and I don't want to wait for a thirty minute ambulance, then what, what are, what are their options there? So that's it, and I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, in favor, this as well.
All right. Tiffany?
I, um, would this be something that maybe ordinance enforcement could be?
Yeah, they'd, they'd be part of it. Yep, it, it would be a team effort.
And then again, the seven percent is, including the citizens, uh, they would be kind of voting for a tax for themselves for purchase food. And you said previously at another meeting, it would be, if we didn't want to, with citizens, do the, all these other three cities?
Yes.
They also include the citizens.
Yep.
Yeah, so, uh, just because talking with people who have heard, but the reason why it didn't pass was because it did include the citizens and, um, so that's, that's why it failed, because they did try, and they did fail, and you did. But previously, you had said it's seventy five, seven point five percent, like, cover for not, the citizens not paying for the food tax? That, so, you know, you said, if, if you wanted, if we wanted to, if the citizens didn't pay, it would be seven point five percent to make over.
I don't recall saying that, but I can do the research if requested.
I think for me to sell it to the community is, we've got to get this passed. Otherwise, we're gonna come after you for more money. We, you want public safety, it's gotta be paid for. You know, we went and got from, went from six dollars to nine dollars. We should have done more, you know, um. We need this to pass, and I think we've, we, the elected officials need to sell it to the community just for what it is. Like, if they want public safety, we gotta pay for it, you know? And just, I mean, otherwise, we would have to go to them and get money.
And I think that the, the fact that when we start the table of who's visiting these restaurants, who's gonna be paying the majority of it is gonna be the tourists. Yes, we are paying some, you know, but, but it, uh, it actually gets them to pay for the services that they are producing. Sixty six percent of our call, they're out of town visitor thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, then we'll move on.
Yeah, so we have a long ways to go.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Kellar. I didn't see.
No, sorry. I, I want to tell you, I lived in Ashland for four years. I never once thought about my happy, or my meal at McDonald's was going to be three dollars and twenty one cents instead of two dollars and ninety nine cents. Obviously, that's changed, like inflation has happened, but I never once thought about that seven percent. And again, I never think about the seven percent when I go across the river to Backwoods or another establishment. Like, it, yes, there are people that are going to be impacted by this, but seven, on a hundred dollar ticket, that's seven dollars. And that doesn't include lots of different ve- beverages as, as part of that. So that's my statement. I'm ready to move forward.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Bernard.
Bernard, I'm. I'm sorry. So, yeah, for me, it's not a question of whether we do it, it's the rate we set. Um, I am for the citizens paying it in addition to our heroes. Um, with seven percent, again, I worry about competition, would make us the highest food beverage tax in the state. Um, I hear you're right, as in not seven, they're five percent.
Yeah, the other, the other three are five percent.
All right. So, um, I guess, you know, I, 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 I want to understand the impact of a five percent on fire and EMS versus a seven. And, you know, what, what, what trade off are made?
Right here.
I know the numbers, but what does that mean to their?
Uh, they would not be able to, uh, pay their paramedics at a market wage. We would have it, correct.
Even at five percent, they can't pay.
No, no, that, that's why we chose seven percent. That got, I mean, this was even before we gave them these planned new raises in this new budget. That three sixty was needed. It is probably more now, but I don't think anything above seven's gonna pass.
Okay, that's helpful. And then the last thing, I understand Chief Logan was gonna go and visit all the restaurants.
Correct.
And, and talk, sit down with them and pure them out, so I'd love to hear how that went.
Correct. I, assuming I get consensus to move forward, I want to finalize that business guy draft. And he's gonna, after we get budget figured out, he's gonna go visit them probably in July and really start discussions.
No.
Yeah, he has done some, but he really wants to kind of, once that guide is done and walk them through kind of the process of it. Um, everybody I've talked to thinks it is confident it will pass, or they will vote for it. Our concern, my chief Logan, is getting that fifty percent of registered voters to vote in an off year. That's our biggest concern. For our charter restriction, if fifty percent of the registered voters do not vote in an off year, the vote doesn't count. I mean, it, it could pass ninety nine percent to one, but if less than fifty percent of the registered voters vote, it doesn't matter. That's my biggest concern.
All right, moving forward. Kellar, did you have something before we move forward?
I, I just, a twenty year old fire agent replaces.
Yeah.
That's a man in six, right, this name.
Yeah, yeah.
Tiffany? And I would just like to offer some feedback on this of the, 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 uh, guy, the business guy for the Cascade Locks thing. I found this, uh, where you say that, that they'll make a five percent, I, I think it would be on this, on the second, on the third page, where, you know, how does the BP, PF, do it work? On the second point, you say that since this is an additional work for the operators, they may retain five percent, and all that is collected to be a great. I, I think it'd be good to have that demonstration of if it's a hundred dollars, we collect seven, we, we collect seven dollars. And how's that, they get five percent?
Correct, yeah, and that, that's, I mean, I need to finalize it, but that's kind of in the sample formula here.
Yeah, I know, I would, it's just like, I think it would be good on that, on that page, just to get us, it's like, okay, we're voting for seven, but they're getting five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so people see that stuff. But other than that, I appreciate, this is a lot of work, right? Appreciate that, and it's, you know, somewhat interesting, maybe. All right, moving on.
Real quick. I'm sorry, last, uh, so if we get the three hundred, two thousand dollars, would that mean that, uh, you, fire and EMS would be able to pay their admin and general services?
Oh, oh, gosh, we, yeah, general fund would still cover that, yeah.
I can see.
Yes.
You have an hour to hook him, man, it's late. And there's still a hell of a lot on that.
Yeah.
Agenda. We'd be concise in their statements and be respectful with the people that would like to speak.
Moving forward, audit update.
Um, Aldritz and Associates completed field work for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three on May twenty seventh. They are currently gathering their findings. And then we'll move into writing their report. Um, Aldritz did send a letter dated May twenty seventh, laying out the status and steps of the audit process. It was sent to all of council. The letter is not stating any findings or concerns, just what would happen if serious findings do happen. And the steps is a standard letter sent out every year. Uh, and then I did add, you should have gotten it on the table when you arrive, a quick chart of, um, audit status. We're about the ninety percent mark, wrapping up, um, fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, and then it'll move right into fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, soon as this one is wrapped up.
Any discussion or questions, Bernard?
Yes, so assuming we can complete twenty three, twenty four by ten, ten, twenty five, you know, the next one is due in two months, right?
Correct.
Okay, and they said they can get that one done by the end of twenty twenty five.
They, they are staying about end of February, assuming there's no hiccups. Yeah, yeah, so we, we will.
That's why I'm on here with.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
But that's what they're telling you right now.
Yep, so we'll, we'll submit an extension to the state for it, um, but we're looking at end of February, assuming no hiccups.
Okay.
All right, any more questions? All right, moving on, and then city administrator Bennett report.
Uh, pretty light report, obviously, as you saw, um, um, League of Oregon City's Small Cities Meeting is set for Moser this Thursday. Myself, I believe Mayor Wood and Counselor Seager are, will be in attendance. Um, oh, were you?
Yeah.
Okay, so then Counselor Pruitt, okay. My apologies, I didn't know you were registered for it. Okay. Uh, then we will be closed on June nineteenth, an observation of Juneteenth. This will be the first time the city is observing it. It was passed in the handbook update in March, maybe this is our second time. I don't know, it all blends together. Um, but yes, so we are closed on the nineteenth, and then one other item not on this list is the contract for the new wastewater plant operator has been finalized. So they will come in about the week before, do the handoff, Jacobs get information from them, but effective July one, they will be running the plant. So. Yes, yep, they didn't have, they were good with it, yep.
All right, Mayor, city council comments. How about Mary Ann?
I have.
Nope, keep moving.
Bernard?
Just a few things, um, first. Oh, yeah, uh, so the ARU planning update, I think I, I recall. I asked your permission to do the, the legwork on that. I have done the legwork. It literally is two sentences that needed to add. It's not even sense theater. Two sections, three words each, need to be added to medium and high density residential development code language. And I went and sat with, uh, Ms. Woozley this morning to say, okay, this is what we need to change, what are we gonna do? Unfortunately, it's not in the code update that the University of Oregon is just doing for us. They, for whatever reason, it's not in there. But, you know, me, I, okay, so what am I gonna do? If it's not in there, that's fine. And it sounds like, uh, there's, the next step would be a notification to the state to say, we would like to make, we're proposing these changes to our code, and if they, they give us the thumbs up, then we take it to Planning Commission to help me through that. What, what, how?
Public hearing and Planning Commission, and then, um, and then a public hearing with the council to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so, uh, I guess what I'm requesting from council is the support, you know, direction to the staff, to have the, our planner put together, they took a state, some kind of staff report to send to the state saying, we, we'd like to make these changes. But that costs a little money. I, that's, that's, that's planner.
Planner time.
Planner time to do that. Is the council in support of that item for the planner? What changes?
What changes? I have not seen the changes, so.
He's recommending adding, right now, A R Us are only allowed in low-density, which is really kind of. Uh, anyway, his proposal is to add them in permitted uses in medium and high-density residential.
Correct.
Right now, they're only allowed in low densities.
So Marion, if you go to our code, if you look under, you know, uh, medium density or high density. You'll read, what's allowed, what's permitted? Single families detached, manufactured home, blah blah blah, but it doesn't say accessory dwelling residential unit. All we're saying is high, accessory residential unit, for both medium and high, there's high.
So those are the six words.
It's literally six words to two different sections.
Three words, twice.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
Is that, did we, do we ask Kathy to make those arrangements? Is council okay doing that?
I'm good with it.
I support it.
Yeah, we would direct that to the planner. The planner would obviously look at it, make sure it doesn't conflict with anything, maybe Bernard missed, double check his work. And then it would go, we do a notice to D L C D and then public hearing to, like Kathy said, uh Planning Commission, then to council. We're looking at two to three-month process.
Probably three months.
Probably, yeah, probably three. But we can direct planning. If you send me the information you have, I can have them start it tomorrow.
Council's good with that? Thank you, yeah. All right, so, uh, second thing, we had the. Captain Tom Celebration Day uh last Friday. And myself and a lot of fellow volunteer pickers got together and did some good cleaning the city. And we had fifteen new volunteer residents join us to get a bucket and a picker.
What?
So, yes, it was a huge, and I haven't had a chance to go right up and and on Facebook, I'm going to, I've been so busy with school, but. Some of you know, I've got one more test due tomorrow, and I'm free man for a few months. So I will get that posted, but yeah, it was a great success. Uh, I loved seeing the spirit, um, folks were motivated to go out and keep Cascade Locks clean and. I'm very pleased with uh that that uh boost in energy, so. All right, uh, let's see, that's all I had, thank you.
All right, thanks Bernard. Denise?
Thank you, I just, uh, a couple of things, I wanna, I will be going to McKed this June twelfth is our last meeting for this fiscal year. And then next year it switches to a Hood River. Um, starting in September, they'll have meetings with the Hood River person in place of Cascade Locks person, unless Hood River says no, which they usually don't. So that will be the last McKed meeting, and I'll check with City Administrator Bennett to see what he wants me to share. But that I don't know, and I want to just re- uh, share that, um. The Stevens in Washington uh did a proclamation of National Pride Month and just a couple of words that I, Denise Erin Baker. Also proclaim that we stand with, I stand with L B G T Q plus community, they're loved ones, allies throughout the country. In the fight for equality, committed to eliminating discrimination and. Um, hope that maybe in the future we'll do some proclamation of inclusion. And I think it is a good time to say that I, um, my husband and I purchased a. Home on the river, a little further down the river. And so as of July, we won't be full-time residents here, but we are keeping our um. Home as a rental, so yay, hopefully getting more voters. We are, um, and that will come down the pipe with the manager and, um. So I will obviously be here through planning and, I mean, through budget and through the end of this month, but. Uh, we'll be looking to the community to put in uh their interest for a a council position to finish my term. And just putting out to this council, I know we all are bipartisan and we represent everybody, everybody, and we also have certain groups that we. Affiliate with more than others, and I hope that this council will bear that in mind when they make their selection. That the folks that I have um represented would stand to use for the representation. Uh, so, you know, reaching out and asking, folks pay attention, they watch this on the TV and they they know what they're doing. And um Main Street Cascade Locks has a new president, I'm still gonna be on the Economic Vitality uh pillar board. Um, and there's exciting news coming out of Main Street, I cannot share for media purposes, but um. We're putting our name on the map, so, and and bearing that in mind, uh many of the Main Street committing uh members, executive board and board are um. Some are tourism, some are port, some are, and and as things come to this council about. Possibly looking at changing boards, or I hope you will look kindly at the the. Benefits that a Main Street organization, if you haven't checked it out, please check out Oregon Main Street and Main Street America and our little Facebook page. Especially after tomorrow. And um, because they're often the economic development arm of a city, they are often, sometimes it's even staff, so I I won't propose how that is going to look. Um, but just keeping in mind that there's a lot of good things that maybe y'all don't know about. And I think that is mostly all of it. And I am here, I care about Cascade Locks, we're keeping our home for the possibility of coming back. My, it's, we're moving fifteen minutes from my husband's work, he drives an hour each way now. Fifteen minutes for my son and, you know, medical things, so I care, we're downtown house, I'm still gonna be. I'm a Main Street board and still care about Cascade Locks, so I hope my opinion matters for the last few weeks that I'm here.
Thank you, Denise.
Eric.
Can I, can, what, so what's the effective date of your resignation?
Right that, I I will be in July. I have not chosen a July date yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what happened last council meeting, but it got me thinking that. There is inequality in our city and in our country. And so, and obviously, this is Pride Month, um, the shirt itself is a reflection of the Buffalo Grocery Store shooting in Buffalo, New York. That happened on May twenty-second, in which an armed shooter actively sought out out African-Americans in the store. Um, I want us to remember the nightclub shooting in Florida that was actively shooting people of the L B G T community. And it got me looking at other statistics, twenty-five states in the United States. Allow for discrimination in the employment based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Sixty-four percent of the L B G T community have experienced anti-L B G T violence or abuse. Forty-two percent of L G B T Q plus have been bullied at school, fifty percent hear homophobic slurs at school. And I was seated with a group of gentlemen uh in the back of my classroom during lunch one day. And repeatedly heard homophobic slurs, so it is something that is not. Just out there in some other world, it's in our community. Fifty percent of L B G T Q adults experience some form of workplace harassment because of their status. Eighty percent of L B G T Q plus adults avoided at least one action to avoid discrimination. Okay, so when we say that there is equality in this world, there is not.
That is, thank you, Eric. Tiffany?
Okay, so, uh, I just wanted to point out that, um, in the six-two League of Oregon City bulletin. Um, there was something about the D L C D funding opportunity for housing planning, um, assistant grants, and I know that's something that we could benefit from. Um, also, this is our eighty, uh ninetyth anniversary this year, says on the calendar on the city.
In two days.
City website challenges. Is there nothing we can do to like celebrate it sometime this summer? Uh, um, I mean, I I hate I hate to wait for another ten years for to go to a hundred. The ninety-fifth, so I mean, it's be nice to acknowledge that somehow to the citizens. Um, I know you set the audio on the camera better, but I watched the first part of the the budget meeting and the camera just kept switching, switching, switching. I mean, it's like you're on a parrot, you're not like one of those bad wheels, like those around and around, so it's kind of annoying, so have we had any more discussions with the port? About the upgrade, Jordan?
Uh, have not, no.
And then, um, I noticed that the meter board is still happening for the taco temporary.
Yes.
Um, yeah, that's that's not.
Bomb a list.
Okay. And then, uh, I wanted to, as. Last year, the discussion came out that I brought before, or I don't know what it was, brought up for the council that, um. Regulator gets really narrow in the summer with people parking on both sides, is there any consideration? About making it parking only on one side? I mean, I know, I know we. Won't have any way of enforcing it, but can we, are there signs?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can definitely do the signs, Lisa, the issue is the enforcement.
Yeah. But, uh, you know, I mean, it's a really narrow sound, I mean, I consider sometimes I can't get my my S G B through, because it's just so. And then I wanted to uh say thank you to John Morgan for uh getting the air quality monitor on the building, that's uh that'll be a really great useful tool for us. In the future, oh, and then one more thing, um, when we have add-ons, would it be possible, Jordan, for you to like put what item the add-ons go? You know, you get papers on our table.
Oh, yes, yeah.
What what item they go with on the agenda?
Yes, I, yeah, I can.
Really great, so, other than that?
All right, thank you.
All right, let's see, I've done the museum meeting and then I went to the tourism workshop for part of it, and I met with Janice and talked to her about tourism and all that. Um, I got to meet, sat in with, uh. Tac, the guy, Chris, the president of Tac and people that are taking over our wastewater treatment plant, sat in a meeting with him and. City Administrator Bennett. Um, I don't know if anybody's ever toured the plant down there, but as if you go in the main door, you'll see there's a, like a lab and table. And then there's a bathroom and a shower and all that, well, currently, last time I was there, there's just cups thrown there, like garbage. It's not very well taken care of, is the point I'm trying to make. And what Chris, the president, really impressed me is that they're gonna take pride in ownership in our facility. Like, they're gonna go through with a fine-tooth comb, even though it's new and make sure that everything's doing, they're gonna clean it up, they're gonna paint it. They're gonna start taking better care of the grounds and all this stuff, um, so I was really impressed that he noticed. How it wasn't being taken care of ways that I had noticed when I was down there. Um, and he said that, um, they would also do like. Uh, field trips for kids, once they get in there and stuff, so kids, that's how they get people interested in this kind of business, is taking them on. Field trips and stuff, so they can see our wastewater treatment plant and learn from that. Um, I met with Shante and Jordan about our financials. And, um, that was a productive meeting, um. And I met with Marion and Bernard too. Then I met with Bernard and the City Administrator. Um, and I did speak with the mayor from Drain, um, because they have a small electric department like we do. Their population there is eleven hundred, and they have one electric, electrician and a sidekick. They contract all of, out all of their work, and that's, and they seem to do quite well with it. Um. And then the committees, as um City Administrator Bennett said, their budget is full, planning's full, and then tourism has two openings. And then I wanted to make sure to say happy birthday to Cascade Locks on June eleventh, it will be ninety years old. And that's all I have. And then we will resess. From regular session and move into executive session.
Yeah, you just state the reasons.
Yeah, you have to quote. Little code.
Uh, we'll move into executive session, O R S one nine two six six O two I. Performance evaluations of public officers and employees. We will also be doing O R S one nine two point six six O two H, and that's a legal council.
I'm gonna break.
And put the arrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're going to.
Too many errors, yes.
And so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we can adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.